Ready?
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for adjusting your schedules so we could get this done this afternoon at 1:00. So, welcome to the meeting. I'll hand it over to Tom.
Thank you.
All the commissioners are here, and there's a few on that.
Thanks, Chairman. I'm looking for the sheriff, and he's on. So, because we're gonna, we have a fairly short agenda review today, but we are still not quite finished with the ink on this thing yet. So, we have a couple of things I want to discuss with you that are not on this agenda that we would like to add if the commission is okay with that. So, what is on paper so far? Nicole, let me start with you on county announcements.
Yes, sir. So, we will talk about, there's going to be a burn out at the northeast Sedgwick County Park. The date for that is between March 20th and April 7th. So, we just wanted to let the community know so they have nothing to be concerned about. It is being conducted within conjunction with the fire department, so it's a control burn. We do have three good news stories, one from EMS, one from tech, and one from HR. And then also, Project Search is going to start their reverse job fair April 1st. So, I wanted to start getting the word out on that, and that's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you. We have a series, once we get into the agenda, we have a series of appointments, Mental Health Advisory Board appointment, an Airport Advisory Board appointment, Aging and Physical Disabilities appointment, two of those actually, an Access Advisory Board appointment, and Solid Waste Management appointment that are on your agenda. Just a couple of new business items. Item H is a donation from United Way to Emergency Communications. So, Alora Forshi will be here to present and ask for acceptance of that. And then Bid Board, and the sheriff is on Zoom here. We are thinking about inserting a new item A, would be item I, bump everything else down, concerning a topic he discussed with you all last week regarding fentanyl education through the use of a geo fencing application. So, I'd like, between Lindsay and Nicole and the sheriff, and I want the sheriff to go first, we might, I think we'd like to put this because timing is a little bit of the essence because school is ending in May, and they'd like to do this in April and May. So, I'll have the sheriff kind of just give an overview of the project, and I know you're up to speed, or you've been briefed on this once already, and then talk about systematically how we would manage this and put it on the agenda at this, at this time. So, Sheriff, you want to go first?
Hi, Sheriff. Hold on, hold on just a second, Sheriff. We're getting your volume turned up, just a minute.
Go ahead. Give it a test, Sheriff.
We good?
Yeah, we're good now. Thank you.
Okay. So, as I discussed with you four last week, cop media, we've been working with, who the county has worked with in the past, looking at how we can get the fentanyl message out to the youth and to parents. And so, they put together a budget of right around $100,000, $99,200 and some odd dollars. This would be split between the county, the, yeah, the county, the Wichita Police Department, and Crime Commission. So, one of the things that we discussed yesterday is, is how would this best work? Would it work better if we made a donation out of the endowed, or out of the opioid settlement funding to the Crime Commission, and then they would pay our two shares of that bill? Or if we would want, you know, just to pay cop media through the county through this opioid set-up? So, what that is getting us is, and Nicole, please, after I go through this, if there's technical questions about what all of them take place, Nicole has a lot better grasp on what this stuff is. So, what we're going to be doing is a programmatic display, and that will be on the phone, but that is just like artwork, like we do our "One Pill Could Kill" campaign directly to the Sedgwick County Drug Use Website. OTT is videos. We're targeting the kids and parents, so youth entrepreneurship and empowerment program. We'll do a couple of 15, 30-second videos to target the youth. We will do two videos that we're going to take next week, and it will feature me and the chief with a scripted text where we talk about the dangers of fentanyl and educational awareness. We're going to have an app campaign. Sherman and Nicole are taking care of that. Snapchat, we're going to be creating videos, eBiz, up to eight of them, so that they can rotate on a monthly basis, those type of things. And so, those will be, I think, 30-second videos as well. Geo fencing, that's where there will be geo fencing around every middle school and high school, and those will both have messages for youth and for the parents. And basically, when they go into the school, it will just be a pop-up ad. I think it's like five seconds or some, 10 seconds, something like that. And so, we're developing material for that as well. We're then going to be running audio ads on Spotify, TikTok for the parents. Will also be a video-type setting that will be shown on TikTok. So, that's what this is getting us. There's also the ability to track how many hits, how many swipes, how many times that people logged into the drug use website, or logged into the geek website to get more information, those type of things. We're hoping we will be able to track information and bring back to you on its success.
Okay. I know you've kind of talked about this before, Sheriff, so I think, is there any questions?
A couple of questions.
Go ahead.
What are the flight dates that we're going to run the campaign, number one? And two, since we're using a media buyer to do this, and there's an agency commission, does this not have to go through an RFP of sorts, or?
I can speak to the timeframe. We're going to do April and May for this campaign, and they're focusing, like you said, on parents and kids for the programmatic display. That's going to be more of just the general messaging, "One pill could kill." Excuse me. One thing I wanted to point out is on Spotify and for TikTok, we're actually going to, or our goal is to contact some parents that have spoken publicly about their situation and the loss of their child to this, and so, we're hoping to get that impactful piece. As to the RFP process, the sheriff, I might let you speak to that, sir. Or Lindsay.
So, it's also going to be September and October. So, it's four months that we're vying for. With the RFP, Tom or Lindsay, if you don't mind.
It will be my pleasure, Sheriff. So, with regard to RFP, if, if we wanted to do this as a county-paid expense, where the county was paying for the full cost, yes, it would make sense for us to go through Charter 68. Joe has, Joe Thomas has authorized an exception to the competitive solicitation if we wanted to do that. However, as the sheriff mentioned, there's multiple partners here, and so, what seems to make the most sense to us is to go through like a grant agreement-type process, which is an exception, well, not an exception, it's just not subject to Charter 68. And so, what we would do is then turn into some kind of grant agreement with probably the Wichita Crime Commission. They would receive the funding from any partners and then actually pay the bills. So, in that case, there's no competitive requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I think it's a great way of moving this forward. Crime Commission has been partnered with Sedgwick County and the city at every step of the way for over a year on this one issue of fentanyl, and so, I think this is a good way of doing it. The only caution that I have is that I want to make sure that all of the other nonprofits don't say, "Well, Sedgwick County is now giving out opioid money, so we're going to go and start vying for that." I don't want to give them some false hope because this is something that is a one-off or a special deal. I just want to put that caution out there. Thank you.
And the only thing I'd add to that is after our meeting, you know, a month or six weeks ago, we had some discussion from the bench, or not from the bench, it was in this room during a staff meeting, that talked about maybe partnering with City Wichita and other partners to spend this money wisely. So, after that meeting, I reached out to the city manager, and he agrees, and his electeds agree, that we ought to combine resource on this to the best of our ability. We have not had a chance yet to sit down and have a comprehensive strategic session on how that's going to roll. So, we're jumping out ahead a little bit on that process, but if the commission's comfortable with that. But I do agree, Commissioner Dennis, I think we have to at some point sit down strategically with the city and determine what the best course moving forward, and we haven't had a chance to do that yet. So, jump a little bit early on this.
All right. I think we're good. Thank you, Sheriff, for the presentation.
So, well, thanks, Sheriff. We'll, we'll word this on the agenda, that it will be the approval up to a certain amount of money for grant for the Crime Commission. We'll, we'll word that. That's how it will appear on the agenda for you. Okay. And then we'll have Bid Board. Then we get into a consent agenda. Item J is a temporary easement, a little bit over $5,000 on a, on a bridge project. Item K is a zone change request, and Scott's on. I don't think that we have, there was no, you know, no, no consternation to this issue. It was moving some rural residential land to an SF-20 designation out around 37th and Greenwich, just a little bit under 80 acres out there. Commissioner Howell?
I think it's a typo, and it says 37th Street East. I think it should be 37th Street North.
Very good. You're right.
Thank you.
Item L is a request for aging mill levy contract with City of Goddard. That's to the tune of 6,000, I think, in the, for their senior center. Item M is position reclassifications by HR, five in corrections, and one in emergency management, just more, again, part of our continuing efforts to get reclassification organizationally completed. Item N is a, we're hiring a curator of mammals at the zoo. I can only authorize a 10% above minimum. This is a 12.9, so it has to come to your attention. So, that's that particular item. And item O is allowing some personal property taxes that are over seven years old now to become dormant, routine procedure by state statute. And I think that's it for the agenda. The one item that is out there yet is we have an election commissioner named. Sheena has visited with her. Not all of you have been briefed yet. I think she's actually going to talk to a couple of you yet this afternoon. We'd like to get her contract agreement on this agenda. So, that could show up if all commission are okay moving forward, but that'll be a last-minute insertion. We'll plan to put it under consent. So, that's the last piece of information that could go on this agenda yet. Yes, Lindsay? Right. Very good. And that's going to go under, Tim, you want to talk about kind of just where we're at on that?
We'll go back to the one that you wanted to add on consent. I think it needs to go on the regular agenda. We've had criticism from the Secretary of State on what we're doing with the election office. I think it's something that ought to be public, that we're doing this rather than consent.
And then one final item that we'd like to add is the grant application to the Spark Committee for the mental health hospital funding. We've, Tanya's been working on that. We think it's done and ready to go. And then we have been in communication with K-Dads about an MOU that would allow them to get us some of the funding that they have in their budget now so that we get, get started on that process. I think we'll have that MOU ready to go on the agenda for the 22nd, but we've had, Justin and their folks have had a couple of back and forth, so we're getting pretty close on that as well.
Thanks. Okay. Couple of quick questions. Yeah, so the 6,000 for the Goddard Senior Centers, is that a, what's, is this a same number we had before on this, or?
It's a, it's a request that came through the process last year. They're, and that is able to do some internal management resources, and we're adding that one at that level.
So, this is going to be an addition to senior center? This is a new senior center?
Correct.
Good. And then reclassifications, we used to get briefings on that as commissioners. I haven't had that briefing. I'm just curious, is, how many reclassifications are we talking about?
It's a total of six, five in corrections and one in. Yeah. Emergency management.
I'll necessarily need a briefing if there's backup material on that. I'll just go read it myself. Then on the dormant taxes, I would love to see a summary exactly what, you know, how many properties and how much, if there's backup material on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good.
Back to item H, the donation from United Way. How much is, is the donation?
They're actual items. They've purchased new phones on behalf of all, for each dispatcher, so they have nice, clean, new phones. So, it's not a monetary donation. It's, and they'll, they will have the details on how many and all of that when they get here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think we're clean.
And while we're all here, there's a lot of things moving legislatively, so I didn't, I wanted to know if you wanted to take a second to kind of brief through that since we're all together publicly, so, and justice somewhere, so.
Yeah, Justin. Yeah, we, we did receive an email from Tanya, I think last night or this morning, about some rapid-moving items, and Commissioner Howell and I had a discussion that there are some fast-moving things.
And hi, Justin Wagner, Deputy County Counselor. I'll speak to House Bill 2447. Tom, I didn't know if your Tanya had in mind a discussion of the other bills that were mentioned as well. If so, I know we've got Adrian Clark and Tom Henry here can speak to those as well, brief summaries. Commissioners, House Bill 2447 is, it's pretty short, the amount of language, and it's a bill that's recently been introduced. It's actually for hearing on Monday at 1:30. Says that a municipality shall not prohibit an individual partnership corporation or other business entity licensed to operate within the municipality from selling any product or service that is otherwise permitted under state law. And what does that mean? That's a good question because it's really unclear and really vague and open-ended. It's been requested by the Kansas Chamber of Commerce. Our understanding and talking to some folks in Topeka is that Petland is who's requested this bill. They've, and really what the bill would do with regard to their business around the country, and I think it'd been proposed not at the city council level, but at a lower level at the City of Wichita, having businesses that sell animals commercially, not pet rescue organizations, but their businesses, having that practice prohibited. And so, you've seen cities around the country that have prohibited that type of business, and so, this bill would contradict that, but the language is much more broad than just prohibiting, you know, certain sales, or prohibiting cities or counties from prohibiting those types of sales. In theory, based on how broad the wording is, it could actually exclude our zoning code applicability, it could exclude our, you know, adult entertainment code applicability, fire codes, all different types of things, because it's very unclear what it means to prohibit a business from operating. You know, it could arguably, depending on how a court would interpret it, it could be a whole host of things. And so, I think the concern at a staff level that we had was just how broadly worded it is, the far-reaching effects it could have, where you could have land uses that usually aren't near, you know, residential areas or schools or things like that, that may actually be allowed because your city codes and your county codes wouldn't apply. So, if the bill was much more narrow, I don't know that we would really care because it's probably more of a city issue, but it would actually apply to us because we're a municipality under the bill. Also, I understand KAC is that coming out against this bill? I'd heard that the League of Municipalities said this is, in their opinion, one of the worst bills for municipalities and local control that's ever been introduced. So, I, I don't, you know, I, it's hard to say how a court would interpret all of this. I think we're out, you know, unless we do it in the next 10 or 15 minutes, which I don't think is realistic. We're outside the timeframe to submit written opposition to it, but I do know that the KAC and the League are opposing it, and obviously, there's other mechanisms that we could have if you'd wish to oppose it.
Well, it's nice, if the League and the, and the KAC are opposing, then that's one step. I don't know how the commissioners feel about, about this. It is vague. It's not, it's just too vague for, for me to weigh in personally. I don't know how you all feel.
I just, you know, I talked to Diane Left a little bit before, after the meeting with Senator Marshall, talked about unintended consequences. I think that's really kind of the point. I gave him a great example, actually, of what, something that the legislature hadn't thought about, that created unintended consequences. I think he's doing a story on it. So, if nothing else, I think what we should do is, is email members of the committee and be respectful, but reach out to those folks before the hearing. We can't be there in person perhaps, but, by the way, a lot of these committees, I'm not sure about this one particularly, but a lot of these committees, if you are in the room, they still will let you testify if you're there. We, I wouldn't say it's necessarily, necessarily no reason to go. We might want to be there anyway, potentially.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Points out a good point. It's, it's, being so vague, it's, we don't know the unintended consequences, especially relates to the zoning and combined zoning with our.
Yeah, and I don't think that was the intent behind it, but I think it was drafted, my understanding from folks I've heard from is it was drafted broadly not to call attention to the party who most wanted the bill being considered, but you're, you're correct, Chairman. It's so broad that it could have other effects, and we really don't know for sure. I mean, it, a lot of it's up, would be up to a court's interpretation. You'd have to wait and see how litigation would go, but it would likely cause some angst and confusion amongst folks.
Thanks.
At that point, I'd ask Adrian, Tom, if they want to each comment.
Anyone want to talk about the one cent sales tax today on food? Isn't that being heard Monday?
The, I'm sorry, the bill about the sales tax on food, is that what you're asking about? I believe it is being heard on Monday. There haven't been any changes to it that I'm aware of at this point, but there was a bill introduced this morning, Senate Bill Number 309, which I think part of the intended consequence of that bill would be to more or less offset the impact that local governments would experience from that loss of sales tax revenue, but it does a number of other things as well. And that was assigned to the Senate Ways and Means Committee and is not yet set for hearing, but essentially, it would create kind of a mechanism where there's, I believe they're calling it creating the fixed, fixing instant revenue shock for taxpayers fund, that it would go from the state level and the funds would be dispersed down to the local level.
Commissioner Howell, do we need to testify on that?
Yeah, I can tell you, it's not going to stay in Ways and Means, it's going to go to Senate tax, and the Chair of Senate Taxes, Karen Tyson. Again, I think that'd be ready to testify on that, no question. I, I can, I, I think our position should be that we don't, we don't believe that they will actually fund it, you know, over time, because they've proven that they won't. Two other programs are in statute they're not funding currently, but if they really wanted to shift the lines away from food, they could increase, just another thought, maybe where they, where they've discussion here, they could, they could increase sales tax on other goods to cover the cost of, of the loss of revenue on food. So, what's the state sales tax at 6.5? They can make it 6.6 or 6.7 on other goods and go to zero on food, and that would, that would create revenue neutral potentially. I'm not sure what the number needs to be. So, if food's the problem, they could simply just shift the line between food and other, other goods, that would be another way to get there, but I don't think that's what they want to do. But I would say, Commissioner Dennis, I think we absolutely have to speak to this bill. Glad you'd like to do that if, if I have the opportunity.
I thought that was Monday that they're going to talk about that.
No, that, the bill she just referred to is Senate Bill 309, and that's in Senate Ways and Means to replace a, or replacement revenue to local government, and it will not stay in Ways and Means, it's undoubtedly going to, going to Senate tax. So, we don't have a hearing date on that one yet. The one you're talking about that carves out the local sales tax, sales tax on food, is there a hearing scheduled on that right now?
Yes, I believe the hearing is scheduled for next week.
You know what day, time?
I believe that Commissioner Dennis is correct that it's on Monday, but I can look that up and double-check.
Last I heard, it was Monday, and that concerns me, especially if Commissioner Howell's not there to testify on it.
I think Lindsay.
What time is tax due?
Lindsay, you have something you want to comment on?
I, I do, just on that Senate Bill 309, which I don't know if we want to stick with the food tax bill first and finish that conversation, and then I can shift to that if that's okay, however, however you all would like to do that. But Commissioner Howell looks like he is maybe looking up the.
We're looking up stuff.
Taxation Committee time for Monday. And so, I can sit quietly while he does that, if that's okay.
Okay. It's early, it's 9:30 in the morning, and we've already missed our cutoff to sign up supposedly, but.
Yeah, Senate Bill 248, I'm sorry, is set for hearing Monday, March 13th at 3:30 PM.
Oh. What was that number again, Senate Bill?
248.
Said for what time?
3:30 PM.
So, we can still submit testimony on that bill today?
We're getting really close to the cutoff time for that.
I think we need to see if Commissioner Howell is available to testify on that Monday.
Are we clear on what are, if we submitted something in writing? I'm not sure at this late hour.
You know, the, the testimony, here's, here's another strategy here. When you don't, when you have more than you, you want to say, but you don't only have time, honestly, the written testimony is almost more of a prerequisite. It could be a single paragraph. I could write, I could write that in five minutes, honestly, and submit that, and we could show up and testify, gives us the right to testify. The test of, the confere testimony is a thousand times more important than that written testimony. So, I think we can still make it 3:30 today, no problem, and, I'll check my schedule.
We need to have five minutes so you can write it.
But I think the testimony needs to go forward on Commissioner Letterhead, not just Commissioner Howell's letter.
I agree. Your, your letterhead, I don't know how we want to get approval on that.
Commissioners, I think you're going to have to agree to what point you're going to want to make in that testimony right now before you try to do something as a board. Can't take official action, but, and you may not all agree, I don't know how you all feel about the sales tax on food. It's a political issue, but there's a lot of, I mean, you all, I don't.
It's $5.7 million impact on our budget. So, I don't know if there's any commissioner that doesn't agree that that's a worry for us on creating our budget.
I don't know, I haven't been able to, Commissioner speaking, and if, and that may be the only point you want to make, is that we don't want to hit a bad amount on our budget, and you, before we get so efficient, you need to find replacement funds or something. I, I don't know, but you need to decide right here. You can't just have one commissioner go off, grab a testimony, and then agree to it.
Right. And wasn't the, and still the estimates are based on the state's estimate of potentially 15% of revenue is from food, but they don't really have. of potentially 15% of revenue is from food that they don't really have.
Food and food ingredients. And that was their estimate in their fiscal note.
So we backwards math 15% on ours, they come up with a 5 point, whatever.
Based on our distribution, yes. It would have been our loss based on last year's actuals, if that 15% is accurate.
Let me make my pitch for what I would say. If, if I had time to write this out in the paragraph, that, first of all, I think they demonstrated a, a, a desire to not follow the statutory requirements of what the legislature's supposed to fund. LAVTR and city-county revenue sharing are two great examples. So I make that point. I would also make the point that our, our state sales tax right now offsets property tax nearly six mills and one mill entirely from food. So if we want to, if we're going to recover that revenue, provide services, again, there's some, their assumption is we're, we're woefully inefficient and we're just going to cut this out and provide the same services. That, that is, first of all, extremely offensive. But I think what you're going to see is an increase in property taxes to provide the same services. And people wonder why our property taxes are high. This is exactly why. And that's what I would say. And I would say just like that. So that's it. What else is there to say?
Okay. So may I jump in now? Sorry. Because I do think this other bill has something to do with that. Because I think it would be the rebuttal. So this Senate Bill 309 that was introduced this morning is a, I will tell you, a very chaotic bill, in my opinion. They do try to give us the fixing instant revenue shock resolution that's associated with any kind of, of sales tax exemption. The problem is that they look at the last 12 months versus, so let's say they go ahead and exempt it as of January 1st, 2024. They will let us get through January 1st, 2025, and they'll do a look back at how much was generated, and then compare it to the prior 12 months. And if there's a loss, they'll pay us the difference. Our challenge is that what we have seen with sales tax growth is that it grows every single year. And so this doesn't take into account any of that lost revenue. Plus, you're waiting an entire fiscal year for that correction to come into play. So in the current fiscal year, you have no idea what you're going to get. And that makes it a challenge from a budget perspective. They do, in this bill, completely eliminate local edulorm tax reduction fund, goes away. They do have a provision for city-county revenue sharing, but it is also, I would argue, pretty meaningless when you look at the amount of dollars that they're considering for the size of the state of Kansas. And then there's other things about the Appraiser's Office coming in and being directed to put together a plan to correct any valuations within 30 days of a June 1 deadline. There's just a lot happening in this bill. But I would assume, to the reason I talk about all of this is because if I'm going up, and I'm a legislator, and I'm hearing our testimony in opposition to the 1% food sales tax exemption, my response is going to be, yeah, but there's a fix out there for you guys. And I just want you to be educated that it's not quite the fix that maybe folks think it is. So thank you for letting me jump in.
No, I appreciate it.
Well, from my perspective, we need, I need to be, we would need to be careful that we're saying, I don't want to say we want to tax the public. I think that's what you're trying to say, but.
You mean, you mean shifting of that line?
That, yeah. And they're trying to eliminate some sales tax. And that's got a lot of flavor. And I just wonder where KAC and others are sitting on the fact that, do we, do we say no, we're not, we're not in favor of reducing sales tax on food?
I, I just think that their, their focus right now is go to zero on food. And obviously, they're trying to cover the, just basically cover the losses with existing balances. There's, again, I, you know, the other thing is, some smaller communities, they may only have a grocery store. You know, some of these, some of these smaller communities have a much larger impact potentially than we will have. But I, I understand, I don't want to come across as being, advocating for tax increases. That's not really the point. I'm simply, to make it, make it revenue neutral, if you want to shift the burden away from food, you could do that, if you wanted to, if you want to shift, you know, a, create a balanced, a balanced approach to doing that, if that's really what you wanted to do. There is a great dependency on sales tax in local government.
Well, and it was approved by a voter referendum, right?
That's another third, that's a third point we should make. Correct. Third point. Thank you.
And I think that's worth noting.
Well, I think words like, yeah, referendum approved and citizen approved. And, and I think what you, how you worded, revenue or revenue neutral, whatever that would be, that would be a fair statement. That's something that's simple and easy to understand versus the eight pages you've got there. So would that be something that, Commissioner, you could just write up on your letterhead and represent versus, I'm getting a nod?
Yeah, I think as long as all the commissioners, at least a majority of the commissioners agree with the point, Commissioner Howell could put it on his letterhead saying, on behalf of County Commission, we oppose this bill for ABC.
So you're saying we can't put it on Commissioner letterhead? It's got a whole file of us up the top?
Well, we don't typically take any kind of official action. I mean, this, this highlights, this highlights exactly the problem of having a legislative session. If you guys want to have a special meeting every day, then we can address these kinds of issues. But we only have generally one official meeting per week, occasionally two. And that isn't quick enough to address the high pace activity that goes on in Topeka. And we have an organization we pay money into.
County Association of Counties, which lobbies on our behalf. We have a lobbyist that can go up and lobby on our behalf. I don't think we need to weigh in on every bill. Johnson County doesn't even come close to weighing in on every bill. They have their lobbyists work behind the scenes and, and, and let their position be known to their legislators. But if we want to weigh in, I think we need to take, we need to have a letter, we need to have testimony in front of the commission to approve, if it's going to be the official testimony to the board.
I'd like to say, we've, we've identified, in not exact words, but the points we would like to make. If everybody agrees on those points in concept, I'd like to authorize the chairman to sign a, a letter from his chairman letterhead that makes those points, as long as, as long as we're not, you know, adding more points that wasn't discussed here today. Again, it's only, we're going to require one signature, the chairman's. We're not five signing this thing. So we can, in concept, I think, give him approval to sign a letter that says what we just described here in concept. Second thing is, the South Central Legislature delegation has a lot of desire to please the Sedgwick County Commission. We represent 1/6 of the state's population. We have about 30 something, 35 legislators, maybe 40, that associate with Sedgwick County Commission specifically. They want to hear us. And no offense to the KAC, but when Jay Hall speaks, he's, he's a great guy. He doesn't necessarily have the passion that I would like to see lobbyists have. And Jason Watkins does a great job. He doesn't necessarily raise his voice the way I will. And I, and I just think that to have a Sedgwick County Commissioner make the trip up there and passionately make an argument for what's good and bad for our community, they hear us in a way when we do that, but they will not if Jay Hall, you know, I love Jason Watkins. He does a great job. He's a good lobbyist. He can speak on our behalf. He can certainly make sure we understand our, our position behind the scenes. But when you stand up in front of a committee, to have a Sedgwick County Commissioner stand there and make this point with passion, I think that is the most effective way to make sure our point is, is going to be received.
But we're only talking about sending one commissioner up, and they don't know that there are five of us that all agree, unless it's signed out on by the chairman.
If you guys, I'd be glad to sign it. It's succinctly, and, and make your points that you want the chairman to sign, and all agree with it, I think we can, we can go ahead and go with that. What are the points, though?
Points where it was a referendum, a citizen referendum approved, and we are very concerned of, revenue neutral. Revenue neutral. That's basically the two main points.
Well, we also talked about they have not funded LAVTR and city-county revenue sharing for 22 years. So the fact that they, even if 309 was to pass, it doesn't necessarily create a lot of confidence on our part that they're going to fund this thing in the future. Second of all, 309 isn't even really a fix, as you just described. So there's four points.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I think you're straying off a little bit when you start attacking them on LAVTR. I mean, if you say it's revenue neutral, you're making your point that we don't want them to adopt a tax up there that's going to harm Sedgwick County. I mean, going into the LAVTR, I mean, I don't know if you all want to.
But to Lindsey's point, she's making the argument that they've been in the back of their head thinking, yeah, we've got another bill that's going to fix your concern. So let's go ahead and pass this thing because we'll fix it on the next bill. And the point is, when they introduce, if they were to pass 309, it doesn't solve this problem. Because, two reasons. Number one, they demonstrated a, 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 they don't provide any confidence to local government that they're actually willing to follow the law. We, they demonstrated that, lack of, lack of funding for 22 years on these other two programs. So 309 doesn't really create a long-term solution. They can just not fund it. But second of all, even if they did fund 309, it actually doesn't replace the growth in sales tax. We're, we're eliminating all future growth in sales taxes from this point forward, if that was to pass. So I think we have four points. 309 isn't really the right fix. They've demonstrated the lack of following the law in the past. The third point was, this was referendally, this was a referendum. And the, and the fourth one.
Revenue neutral.
It's a, they, they, they could make this revenue neutral if they wanted to.
Well, I kind of agree on the, going in the past 22 years, there's, there's people up there that only been, like, only been there one or two years that may not even realize all this. So I, I'm hesitant to, to go into that, that part. Even as soft as we want to say, basically accusing them of not following through for 20 years, I, I don't think we need to go there.
And it appears we're already testifying on Senate Bill 309, which is going to get a hearing. And we can make our points on Senate Bill 309 if it's not making it revenue neutral. I mean, we're.
That's the point I was going to make. I think Monday, we need to stay with, with the bill that's being referenced on Monday. Then unfortunately, we're going to have to send Commissioner Howell back on Thursday, is it?
309 is not currently set for a hearing.
Well, whenever 309 is up, we're going to have to go back again on 309. I don't, I think we're mixing apples and oranges if, if we put them both in one letter. We need to address the problems that are in, in, what is it, 248?
I think as Commissioner Howell said earlier, the written testimony is really, can be very succinct. If he's testifying on the bill, they're very likely, it could be some of these issues come up, which he can address at that time in front of the committee. But the written testimony is just something to.
We just need to get a short written testimony.
Right.
So that we're on an agenda on that.
If we, so Commissioner, if we, if we.
I'm going to have my mic on.
The four.
I heard what you said.
No, okay. I got revenue neutral and vote referendum. What was the third one? Or fourth one? The one, not the LAVTR, the other.
Well, I, I, well, I'd like to make a point that, that lots of food sales taxes go to, to recover that revenue. It's going to be another one mill on a property tax. Everyone hates property tax. I, if you ask people, you know, most people, do, do you really worry about this small amount of tax on your, on your grocery bill, or you like to pay another mill in property tax? I think I know the answer. We want to worry our property taxes are so high in Kansas. This is exactly why.
I mean, who's going to draft testimony? I guess our office, I mean, I think our office could put some paragraphs together from what you guys are saying, if you'd like. And we can certainly add a sentence that if you do, if you do not make this bill revenue neutral, it could, it could ultimately result in a potential prop, you know, edulorm property tax.
It doesn't automatically kick in that, that a property tax would happen.
No.
Increase. And that would insinuate that we would. And so it's.
Can I throw out one more thing? I asked Lindsey a week or two ago to put together a list of theoretical, and I understand all these monies are fungible. Property tax dollars are the most spendable, as well as the half of our sales tax revenue that comes to Sedgwick County. They are kind of in the same bucket. You could spend them for what, pretty much anything you want to, because local government has the authority to spend those dollars as we see, as we see the greatest needs in our community. I, I've had talked to someone to the door, and they say, you know, you're taxing me out of my own home on my fixed income. And I feel really badly about someone maybe losing their home over property taxes. But I say, well, those taxes are providing things like public safety, infrastructure, quality of life. I'll forget quality of life for just a second. Infrastructure, public safety, and human services. Health Department, for example, or the jail and courts and the election office. They, they stand by those things, understand those things are necessary government. When I say we're taking your, your house potentially for things that are discretionary, like arts commission, Riverfest, museums, and things like that, that is a little bit more, is more difficult to make that point. Okay? So I asked, you know, how much of those things can we cover with our, half of our sales tax revenue? Well, guess what? You can cover pretty much all of it. And maybe have about a million dollars left over. So the, the crime prevention fund, for example, can be paid out of that. Our, CAC or EMCU money for children, those three things over there, ICAC, CAC, and EMCU are funded out of property tax dollars. But you could say, that's a choice we make, it's paid for out of sales tax, if you wanted to earmark those monies for those things, for example. I could argue that the zoo and exploration place, for example, are being paid out of, out of sales tax. So if you have, say I have 16, 16 and a half million dollars, almost 17 million dollars in discretionary spending for quality of life things that we all value, and they were to suddenly take $6 million of that away, I don't think I'm going to cut the sheriff, or I'm not going to cut tornado sirens and 911. I'm not going to cut our infrastructure. Where, where do you really have a chance to cut? I hate to say it, it's kind of amongst those property tax supported, I'm sorry, the sales tax supported quality of life things that we all enjoy. That's where the cut's going to get absorbed, unless you can replace the revenues somehow. So as much as I hate to connect dollars to actual expenditures, in my mind, that's kind of a, that's kind of where I'm thinking, that those sales, those sales tax dollars fund those quality of life things that we all value. So you take $6 million out of that 17 million dollars, 6 million, let's say 5.7 million, out of the 17 and a half million dollars that we have in that quality of life fund, that's about one third of our quality of life has been defunded. Does that make any sense? What one third of that quality of life stuff do you really want to have take the hit? I don't think anybody in our community, community really wants us to do that. So then we're looking at revenue replacement. And what, what does that really mean? Property tax. So I know we don't like the idea of increasing property taxes, but something in the budget's got to give. You can't just have all this stuff and suddenly take a $6 million hit and provide the same services. It doesn't add up. So I don't like tax increases. We can cut, but those cuts are going to be very painful.
Maybe just a word that, the potential for cuts in, in vital services, both discretionary or whatever the words are, required, I don't know, public, public health, infrastructure, and health is one thing, and the others are.
Let us put two or three paragraphs together that we believe.
One would be fine.
Captures them. One, one paragraph.
Well, it's, it's a, the way, it's a ticket in the door, basically. We can write a quick one or two. We'll have Adrian and, and Nicole and I and Commissioner Beatty have to be on the Zoom at two. But we can get maybe Steph to sit down. We can, we can craft this.
Good. All right. Thank you. You had something else?
Yes. There were two other bills on the list that I was going to speak on. One is House Bill 2002. That would just extend, continue the existence of the reimbursement for the fund for printing and postage costs for county clerks indefinitely, essentially. And we previously submitted written testimony in favor of that. It passed the House Final Action 114 to 7 and is now in Senate assessment and taxation. Then there's House Bill 2326, which relates to the Scrap Metal Theft Reduction Act. That's set for hearing next Thursday at 9:30 in the morning. And it would specifically add catalytic converters to the list of items that are regulated, regulated scrap metal. It would also extend the expiration date of that act.
I think that's, thanks for reporting some good news.
Yes. I do what I can.
The catalytic, I've had just another recent one, phone call about catalytic converters out of an apartment complex. So that's, I'm glad. out of an apartment complex, so that's, I'm glad, I kind of thought catalytic converters were already in that bill, but
They were actually added by amendment.
What about the bill on blight that was in there today?
I'm not familiar with which bill you're referring to.
Commissioner Dennis, that, that bill, just in broad strokes, as I understand it, it would prohibit municipalities from having like a listing of unoccupied buildings and then citing them for being unoccupied. We don't have any practice like that here with our code enforcement folks, but I think a couple of cities in other parts of the state do, so that wouldn't have any impact on our current operations, but the intent behind that bill is to prohibit cities or counties from being able to write a citation for a building being vacant. Do you have any other questions on that, or?
Would it prohibit M A B C Ds going out with a lighted building and writing it up, and eventually, you know, we have voters to that building and call them off?
Commissioner, I don't believe it does anything to prohibit the ability of nuisance abatement the cities have and that we have as an, as an urban county, so I don't think it, it erodes that in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Justin. Okay, anything else? Mike? Okay.
Has a lot happened.
Yeah, looks like
Lot of legislative issues. Thomas Henry, Assistant County Counselor, so I'm talking on, there's four different bills, well, three bills and one resolution to amend the Constitution coming up that are appraisal related, so the resolution to amend the Constitution simply reduces the percentage of a residential property's appraised value that is going to be considered assessed value for property taxation purposes, and the proposal is to reduce it from the eleven and a half percent that it's currently at, down to nine percent, so effectively that's going to shift the tax burden from residential properties to
Commercial
Well, commercial, farmland, all other types of properties
Does it still pay taxes?
In, in the county, so, and, and because that's a constitutional amendment, there's a lot more hoops for that to jump through, but there is a hearing for that next Thursday at three thirty P. M. So I don't know if you want to speak anymore on that. Okay.
I don't think that bill has a chance of passing.
Okay.
I mean, I know who, I know who introduced the bill, and it's a constitutional amendment.
Right.
And you're just going to sock it to commercial, I just, it's going to have a lot of, a lot of business input in that deal, and I don't think there's any chance whatsoever.
Right. The next bill is Senate Bill two seventy-four, and essentially what this bill is doing is it's limiting how appraisal can occur for what they call special purpose property. With these types of properties, it's recommending that we can only use the cost approach to valuing these properties, and the definition for special purpose properties is essentially those that are designed for unique use, in the layout that's not readily converted to another type of use, so they mention specifically bowling alleys, car washes, hotels, is kind of some examples of what they're looking at there, and I know that the, there's an association for appraisers in Kansas that are strongly opposed to this, because it kind of handcuffs them in what they can do in valuing the best use of, of a property with that. I've also got House Bill twenty-two oh one, which amends K S A seventy-nine fourteen sixty, and the big piece, or the, the big change from that is it's going to require that when we send out our property change notices, it's going to require that we show the appraised and assessed values for not only the current year, but for the four years prior leading up to that. And I, I mean, that doesn't include what the actual tax, tax amount change was, it's literally just the assessed and the appraised values, so I don't really feel like that gives a full picture of what's changing for them, but that's what they're proposing, so that there's more information on those notices. And then finally, Senate Bill two sixty-three, doesn't really affect us much, more so, it's, it's a requirement that P V D take the directives that they currently have and put them into rules and regulations, because they're not required to do so, so.
That's probably all right.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No, I think that's enough. Mike and I, we're sidebar, I, I think at some point we got to get Jay Stump to speed on this either, Mike, or I'll take care of that. We have agenda modifications we have to make, so I think we're, I think that's all we had today, so.
A little busy for the Friday afternoon. Okay. You all have a meeting at two? Right, okay. Right, then we will endeavor on for the weekend. Thank you.